Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular Wednesday night, April 10th, council meeting. Welcome, council, welcome staff, guests, and I would ask members of council to rise to do the council commitment.
We are grateful for the many gifts which have been bestowed on Penetangushine and its citizens, including the gifts of freedom, opportunity, and peace that we enjoy. May we be worthy custodians of all that has been entrusted to us. We ask that all in attendance and those who could not be here to assist us in promoting good government. May our decisions as members of council be enlightened, and may we all be strengthened in our awareness of our duties and responsibilities. May we be granted the wisdom, knowledge, will, and understanding to preserve the good fortune of the town for the benefit of all, and to make good laws and wise decisions. Thank you.
Moving on to item three of the agenda, approval of agenda, and it is moved by Councilor Vodimokher and seconded by Councilor Cummings, that the agenda of the regular council meeting of April 10th, 2019 be approved as adopted. All in favor? That is carried. Moving on to declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone has to declare, they may do so now or at their appropriate time. We'll move on now to the adoption of the minutes not already confirmed, and that is moved by Councilor Cummings and seconded by Councilor Vodimokher, that the following minutes of council meetings be confirmed and adopted as circulated, regular council of March 27th, 2019, and committee of the whole, March 27th, 2019. Errors, omissions? All in favor? Moving on to six, presentation and consideration of report, committee of the whole, and it is moved by Councilor Cummings and seconded by Councilor Vodimokher. No, that's not the right one. Where are they going? They're all sixes, sixes, sixes. Here we go. Well, we got them in order. It is moved by Councilor LaRose and seconded by Councilor Sainte Ma, that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Recreation and Community Services section be approved. Anybody have anything to pull? The, all in favor? That's carried. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Dubois and seconded by Councilor Clu, that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Planning and Development Services section be approved. Anyone have anything to pull there? No? All in favor? That is carried. It is moved by Councilor Mayotte and seconded by Councilor Levy, that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Transportation and Environment Services section be approved. Anyone wish to pull any of those? All in favor? It is moved by Councilor Vodimokher and can, seconded by Councilor Cummings, that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole related to the Finance and Corporate Services section be approved. Does anyone have any one of those to pull? No? All in favor? Moving on to presentation and consideration of reports, special committees, there are none, motions of which notice has been previously given, there are none. Notice of motion, there are none. So we move on to consideration of bylaws, 10A. It is moved by Councilor Cummings and seconded by Councilor Vodimokher, that the council of the town of Penetangushine introduce the following bylaws, 2019-23, 2019-24, 2019-25, 2019-26, and 2019-27, and that bylaws be read a first time and deemed to be read a second time and third time and carried. Any concerns or issues? No? All in favor? Question period from media and the public. There being none, we'll move on to announcements and inquiries. Does anyone have any announcements or inquiries? Councilor LaRose?
Thank you, your worship. We just wanted to announce that we have a seniors driver's license renewal process coming up available soon. We need a minimum of 25 people to make it happen, so if anybody is redoing their license or getting ready for that, give us a shout. It looks like it's scheduled for Thursday, April 25th.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements or inquiries? There being none, we will go to the confirmation bylaw, and where is that? 13A. Moved by Councilor Vodimokher and seconded by Councilor Cummings, that confirmation bylaw, 2019-28, be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. All in favor? Motion to adjourn? Councilor Cummings and Councilor LaRose, all in favor? Carried. We'll take a five-minute break before we go on to our committee of the whole. Allow those puffers a little time, you know.
Now, is the record, your worship?
Okay. Okay, council, we'll call our committee of the whole meeting to order. Number two, approval of the agenda. Committee of the whole agenda, April 10th, 2019, recommended action that the committee of the whole agenda for April 10th, 2019 be approved as presented. A mover and a seconder. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Dubois, and seconded by Councilor Mayotte. All in favor? Okay, so moving on to declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone has, so do now or at the proper time. We move on to number four, presentations and delegations, and this evening we have a presentation from Hemson Consulting, redevelopment charges, and Stefan, you'll have to give us your last name, because I certainly can't pronounce it.
Is that mic on, Mike?
There we go. So it's Kvetinovich, but even the poles have trouble with it.
Well, Stefan.
Stefan is just fine. Yeah. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This evening, actually, I just want to make sure that I use the right, is either of these okay?
You don't actually have to use the laptop.
Or just the laptop, okay. Fair enough. So, Mr. Lees has given me about half an hour to speak to you a little bit about development I work for Hemson Consulting. We've been doing your development charges studies for some years now, and the purpose really behind this evening is twofold. First of all, it's to let you know what work has been done to date and give you the first cut of the development charge rates that have been calculated, and second of all, to give you an understanding of what underpins the rates that have been calculated, and in some respects, the second part is more important than the first, because we will be coming back to you in a few weeks' time, again, this time with a formal background study in play, and we can focus a little bit more about the rates and the implications of the rates and what rates you actually want to implement at that point. What I'd really like to focus on this evening is the works that have been included in the charges, because council is required to express its intent to carry out those works if it's going to proceed with imposing a development charge. But I thought I'd start off just from the get-go to, for those of you who haven't been through this process before, just spend some time talking a little bit about what development charges are and the legislation under which we operate. These charges are fees that are imposed on new development in the town to pay for growth-related capital costs, so it's capital costs only, not operating costs, and it's only capital costs to the extent, oh, thank you very much, that they benefit new development. The principle behind development charges is that growth should pay for itself, so that when you build new facilities or extend services into areas where development is occurring, it's the development that pays those costs, and those costs are not borne by your existing ratepayers. Development charges are imposed by bylaw, and the legislation under which we operate the charges is the Development Charges Act, and the act says that a bylaw has a maximum life of five years from the time it comes into force, and your bylaw, as a result, expires on September the 2nd of this year. So if you want to continue imposing those charges, you have to do two things. You have to undertake a background study, that's what we've been retained to help you with, and secondly, you have to hold at least one public meeting, and as I say, we're proposing right now to hold that public meeting in a couple of months, and at least bring a bylaw forward to you before the summer recess. After the bylaws pass, there's a 40-day period where anybody can appeal the rates in the bylaw and the provisions in the bylaw, and those appeals are adjudicated at the local planning appeal tribunal, which some of you may still refer to as the Ontario Municipal The legislation is quite prescriptive about how the charges are to be calculated, so I'm not going to sort of go into this in too much detail, but suffice to say the charges are levied on a service basis. So when you look at the bylaw, you'll see a charge for indoor recreation, you'll see a separate charge for your sewer services, and so on and so forth. You have some flexibility in defining what services you want to charge for. There are certain services which you cannot impose a charge, and for the services for which you can, the legislation distinguishes two types. So there are certain services for which you can impose a charge that will pay for 90% of growth-related capital costs only, and then there are certain services, the engineering and protection services, for which you can impose a charge that would pay for 100% of the growth-related capital costs. And for the 90% services, you can set the charge only to recover costs over a 10-year period, and for the other ones, you can set the charge over a longer period if you wish. And that's in fact what you do. We'll get into that in a second. This is the, these are the rules by which the charges have to be calculated. Step one is to do a forecast of the development that you're anticipating over the next 10 years or longer. Step two is to do a sort of backwards-looking exercise. The legislation says that you can't use development charges to increase your level of service beyond what you've been providing on average over the last 10 years. So we have to take some time to figure out what that level of service is, and we've done that over the last couple of months with your staff, and they've been very helpful in gathering the information we need to establish those service levels. Those service levels essentially then set a cap on what can be funded moving forward. The third step is to identify what kind of infrastructure and services you might need to provide services for that new development, and then when we've identified what the costs of that infrastructure is, we have to account for funding that you're going to be receiving from, by way of grants or subsidies or other contributions. We have to take the required 10% service discount off those costs. We have to account for any portion of the costs that are going to benefit your existing residents. We have to account for any reserve funds you may have on hand that you can use to fund those costs, and to the extent that certain pieces of infrastructure benefit residents well beyond the 10 years, we have to account for that so-called post-period benefit as well. All of those costs have to be removed from consideration, and what you're left with then are the costs that are eligible for development charge funding. We recover those monies as a charge per dwelling unit on residential development, and for non-residential developers, the charge is imposed per square meter or per square foot of new building space. The final requirement of the background study, which is in red here, is that we also do have to have some understanding of the long-term capital and operating cost impacts of proceeding with the capital works that are identifunded in the study, and I'll come back to that in a second. This is just a snapshot then of the development forecast that we're working with right now. As you probably know, the town must plan to achieve population and employment targets that are set out in Schedule VII of the Growth Plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and in Penetangushine's case, that is 11,000 people and 6,000 jobs, although we have adjusted the population to account for the 400 extra people that have been approved by the Ontario Municipal Board back in a decision in 2015. But essentially, we've anchored the forecasts on achieving those targets by 2031. And if you look at the second column, the second column of figures here, you'll see that over the next 10 years between 2019 and 28, what that means is to achieve those targets, we would anticipate constructing about 50 dwellings a year, growing by about 1,200, 1,300 people over the next 10 years, and by about 860 jobs, which would translate into just over 50,000 square meters of new non-residential floor space. For the services, the engineered services, that's your water, sewer, and roads, we're going to be setting the charge all the way up to 2031, so the growth increments are slightly higher, because we're including those extra three years of growth. Essentially, the rate of growth that we are anticipating here is a little bit higher than what you've seen over the last 10 years, but not too different from what we've seen over the very recent past. That is to say, in the last two or three years, there's been quite a lot of construction in the town, so that's in line with what we're anticipating over the next 10 years. In terms of the services themselves, the 90% services, the general services, are in blue here. General Government refers to essentially planning studies and related studies. The library, parks and recreation, and public works, and that would be your public works facilities and your fleet. And then on the engineering and protection services, your fire, police, and then roads, water, and sewer. We've spent quite a lot of time in consultation with your staff to identify what infrastructure and facilities might be required to service the forecasted population and employment over the next 10 years or 13 years, and that's what I'd like to spend a little bit of time with you going through. So I'm just going to go through each one of the services and highlight for you the projects. You'll see the projects that are listed in bullock points, and up at the top here represents the funding envelope, that's the amount we can fund over the next 10 years according to your service level cap, the total cost of the program, so that would be all the costs of the projects that are either entirely growth-related or in part growth-related, the costs that we've removed from consideration, either because they represent a benefit to your existing community, or the 10%, or anything else we can't include in the charge, and then finally, the costs that we are bringing into the development charge calculation. So for general government, we're considering about $438,000 in growth-related capital costs, and these are the studies that we have included in the calculation. So community improvement plan, secondary plans, a lot of these are planning studies, the development charge studies themselves, for example, and some of these have quite substantial benefit to existing components. For example, the official plan addresses certainly growth management, but it also addresses, you know, planning for people who are already here, so we're not funding the entire portion of that particular study, for example. When we move to the library, on the right, you can see we're funding about $403,000, $404,000 over the next 10 years of growth-related capital, and that's largely related to the ongoing and incremental addition of collection materials in the library, and the intention would be to also expand the library space by finishing the basement area, and as well create additional parking at the library on the existing site. So there are certain costs associated with expanding the capacity of the library to provide its services. On the fire side, it's $1.2 million worth of costs that we're bringing into the rate. Much of this is related to previous expenditures that have been made, in particular, the expansion of the fire hall in 2010, for which the town at the time took out a 10-year debenture. So because of that was an expansion, and because council at the time expressed its intent to pay for that expansion through development charges, we are still funding that debt, which I think expires in 2021. A portion of that debt will continue to be funded through the charge that we've calculated today. We've also included a provision for bunker gear for new firefighters, a new fire master plan, and the recovery of a small negative reserve on balance that currently exists. On the police side of things, really, I think the message here is that, is that we generally consider the existing service to be sufficient to cope with the additional population and employment that we're anticipating over the next 10 years, but some provision has been made for outfitting an additional police officer and some equipment for vehicles. On the parks and recreation side, we've included about $963,000 in growth-related capital cost. The vast majority of that is related to the development of the Martin Valley Park. I understand that you acquired land for this park recently, and it abuts quite a large development along Thompson Road, so that project, I know, is in your capital forecast, and I think it's being phased over three years, between 2021 and 2023. So those development costs have been included in the development charge, but there's also provision for including some of the costs, at any rate, of upgrading playgrounds, expanding your existing trail network, and to the extent that you may be considering expanding facilities in the near or midterm, we've included a provision to do a feasibility study for a new arena, as well as a more comprehensive recreation master plan as well. There is no component of the charge that includes the costs of a new arena, though, just to make that clear. On the public works side, it's $1.3 million worth of costs, mostly related to adding space in your existing public works yards. That would include two bays in the main building on Centennial Drive, as well as associated vehicles, tandem sanders, and two new dump trucks, a salt dome, altogether $1.3 million. On the roads and related infrastructure, related being intersection improvements, streetlights, anything that falls within a roadway, $3.7 million being contemplated in the charge. There are a number of There are a number of road projects that are extending the road network, the extension to Thompson Road in that area I mentioned before, and the extension of Lucy Street. But there are also a portion of costs related to the reconstruction of existing roads, to the extent that that reconstruction work is going to be improving sightlines, addressing traffic needs, that will all allow more traffic to travel on the road network, and we consider a portion of that to be growth-related. There's also related roadwork, so there is a provision also in the charge for expanding the network through bike lane construction, sidewalk construction, and to the extent that you're getting into the transit business more, the ability to provide transit shelters and cuts into the roadway to accommodate buses and bus routes, as well as studies themselves. On the sewer side, now, I should mention, that $20 million in the top right should actually be $4 million. I apologize, but I noticed that on my way up here. So $4 million has been brought into the charge. It's almost entirely related to debt repayment on the expansion of your Main Street wastewater treatment plant. That's been a longstanding development charge element, and we will continue to fund that until the debt expires, which is quite some time away. And there are also certain costs that are included that relate to upgrading existing sanitary sewers, where we're expanding the pipe to create more capacity in the linear network as well. On the water side, it's just under $3 million. There are costs associated with water storage and supply expansion. That's a little bit more into the long term. But there are also improvements, similar to the sewer, improvements to the existing linear pipe network that would expand the capacity of that network, as well as studies. All that translates then into a development charge rate for residential development of about $15,000 per single and semi-detached dwelling unit. For the smaller units, it's a lower charge, so just over $12,000 for a townhouse and $10,400 for an apartment unit, with the charge fairly evenly distributed among all the services, although 50% of the charge relates to the roads, the sewer, and the water. And on the non-residential side, the charge is $82.39 a square meter, and here, about 2/3 of the charge related to roads and sewer and water. We don't calculate a charge for parks and rec or library for the non-residential developers. We consider the need for those services to be driven entirely by the residential sector. So this slide gives you a sense of how the newly calculated charge compares to what's currently in place. So the first column of numbers then is your current charge for a single and semi-detached unit, just over $14,000. So the newly calculated charge would be about $1,000 more, or an 8% increase. You can see that the shifts between services is not always the same, so there are higher charges, certainly for fire, public works, and parks and recreation, where you currently don't have a charge. But there are also decreases in roads, sewer, and the library board. And on the non-residential side, it's a similar story. An increase in the charge of $3 per square meter, which is about a 4% increase on what you currently charge. And again, similar shifts that we see within each individual service. So what's going on? Why are we getting these shifts? Why is the increase what it is? It's difficult to pinpoint exactly sometimes why these occur, but certainly, to the extent that there've been changes to the development forecast over the last five years, more rapid growth required to get to the 2031 targets than what we anticipated five years ago, that tends to pull the rates down. And certainly shifts in the rate of population and employment growth will shift the way the non-residential versus the residential rate increases, to the extent that certain services have increased their level of service, particularly in fire and public works. That increases your ability to fund those services. There have certainly been changes to the capital program, particularly in the engineered services, where a lot of the projects that were included in the previous study have now been completed and have come out of the capital program. And that's brought the rate down for the roads and the sewer. And perhaps the biggest change on the residential side is that we don't currently have a parks and recreation charge, and now we do. And the reason why we don't have one is because five years ago, you had sufficient reserve funds to pay for all the needs that were identified at that time. So we couldn't justify a charge. This just gives you a sense of how the current charges and what's been calculated compare to some of your neighbors. I'm sorry, I'll try and use colors that are more different from each other next time I come here. But essentially, everything in the dark blue on the left represents the upper-tier charge, the county charge here in Penetangushing, and everything in purple on the right represents that component of the charge that's imposed by the lower-tier governments. And for the residential side, I think it's fair to say, you know, Penetangushing sort of sits just above the middle range, so my view would be still very competitive, even if you imposed the new higher charge, your relative position would stay the same. And perhaps the only other thing to mention is that any municipality that has an asterisk is currently undertaking a background study, and more often than not, that results in an increase in the charge. So we would expect certainly some of these municipalities to be higher up by the end of the year. Perhaps worth mentioning as well is that the current non-residential construction price index, which is what the town uses to index its charge every year, is running at around 6%. So even if you didn't change your charge at all, in December, you would be increasing it by 6% anyway. So if it's worth keeping in mind, I think. On the non-residential side, it's a similar story, still, I think, certainly competitive with what we see here in the northern part of Simcoe County and a bit further afield. And as I say, there are certain municipalities that are undertaking background studies, and we would see some of these perhaps increase over the coming months. One of the things that we'd like to do this evening is get your blessing to proceed with drafting a background study and a bylaw. When it comes to the bylaw itself, we'll be looking at the policy provisions of the bylaw. The legislation has been updated since we last did a background study, so that we're now required to consider the use of area-specific development charges. Our recommendation to you is that the types of services that you have here, and the fact that the town is a fairly self-contained place, it's not like that there are separate settlement areas with large rural areas in between. It's a self-contained place, so that it is entirely appropriate to have a structure where all development pays equally across the town. We'll look at the indexing provisions, and we can certainly address issues of exempting forms of development or phasing in the rates, if that's what you would like to do. And we'll be looking at other policies dealing with redevelopment as we move forward. And I'll speak to these the next time that I come up to you. And certainly be looking to align the policies, to the extent that you'd like to, with what the county's doing as well. And Mr. Lees actually just showed me that the county last night passed a bylaw that, by which they are going to provide an industrial exemption to their development charges in cases where the lower tier provides a similar exemption. So they will match anything that the lower tiers do in the county. So that's something that we'll make sure we want to review as well. Next steps then. If we're going to, I'm going to work backwards here. If we're going to target the 26th of June council meeting for the passage of a new bylaw, then we need to hold a public meeting on June the 12th. That will give us enough time between those dates to address any public feedback we received at that meeting and make any changes if they're needed. If we're going to have a public meeting on the 12th and pass a bylaw on the 26th, the background study needs to be released on April the 26th of this month. So I would really like to get a sense, certainly from staff or from council, that we can proceed with that, because that's obviously in two and a half weeks. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you or councillors may have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Stephane. Members of council, do we have any questions of Stephane? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Worship. Stephane, I was just under Parks and Rec. Could you explain a little more the Martin Valley Park? We have $795,000, but was that over the next 10 years? I know that we have had presentations here at council, but I don't believe we made any concrete decisions on exactly what we were going to do with that property. I just find that that's pretty high, but looking for an explanation.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. We have three different costs in here, and these are taken entirely from the capital forecast documents that the town maintains. Phase one, and those documents show, phase one in 2021 would be $300,000 for engineering and design work. Phase two would be related to buildings and amenities for $220,000. And then phase three would be for a BMX bike pump track in 2023 at $275,000. So that's what's in the capital forecast, and that's what's just been brought in here. But certainly, I'll defer to your, you know, public or recreation director to explain more if I've missed anything. No?
Sure. I wish for me to expand on that. So I had brought forward a consent report to council about the Martin Valley proposed designs. We did some public consultation, and we presented through the capital budget, the 10-year plan to phase in the preferred design over a three-year period. Certainly, council has not, they've adopted the 10-year plan, but we know that it's, you know, the approval process of adopting those pieces doesn't happen for, it has to be adopted annually. And I think it's a two-year forecast that they adopt. But it is proposed in the 10-year plan, and council has adopted it in concept, and that's why it's been included in the study.
Councillor Levy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My question is just to confirm that everything here is in the 10-year capital plan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I'm trying to cast my mind through it. I can certainly say this. The capital plan was the foundation for this capital program. So what we did was, we used what was in the previous background study and what was in the capital plan as the basis for developing the works that are here. There may be one or two, there are no major items that are not in any of those documents, but there may be one or two studies, and there may be some provisions in the roads for bike lanes and sidewalks and sort of non-road-related works that we included because we knew that the capital plan was a bit deficient in those areas.
Thank you.
Supplemental, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephane, my next question would be, we can use Martin's Valley as a great example. The money that is being collected by way of development charges, if, say, two to three years from now, a council votes to remove some of that, what happens with the accumulated money?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. And that may have been what happened the last time we did this study. We had a lot of money in the recreation program that had built up over some time, and we used that money to fund the projects that were identified at the time. And what that meant was, we didn't need a charge, so there was no charge calculated. The other part of your question, I think, is, you know, what happens if a priority changes over the next 10 years? This is why we update the study every five years, to reset things and realign those priorities. The charges are levied on a service basis. So the legislation does anticipate that within a service, priorities may change. And so I certainly, my view is that if you decide to change projects, change the scope of projects, as costs come in, as studies are done, the legislation is flexible enough to allow you to change the way you apply the funds, as long as they remain within the service.
Further questions? Councillor Rose?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, over the years, when we have had to do these every five years, next time when you come back, could you provide us with something that would say, last time we projected a growth from 8,000 to 9,000, and it actually turned out to be whatever that number is? And the same is on some of the capital items that Councillor Levy was just talking about, where we have put away sufficient funds for something, and then it was either too expensive or the council of the day changed their mind to have those surpluses.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We can certainly provide a comparison of the amount of growth-related costs that was anticipated for each service last time around versus this time around, and overall, the growth prospects five years ago from what they are now. I would say, I think that the growth plan population figures have not changed. So it would simply be a matter of how steep the line was in order to get to the same numbers. That's the only thing that's changed. But fundamentally, where we're ending up is the same place.
Further questions of Stephane? Councillor Sinema?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just one question. Looking at the non-residential rate, it does seem relatively, quite a bit higher than other municipalities. Is that because we have such a, like, a smaller industrial, commercial development in general? I'm just curious as to the overall...
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Difficult to answer that question because, you know, the costs of servicing different places varies from place to place. So that's obviously a big part of what's going on. It may be that because the biggest single cost item in your engineered services is the Main Street sewage treatment plant, and that has, you know, a fairly substantial non-residential component to it, that may be part of it. The other part of it may be that there are certain municipalities that discount their non-residential charges, particularly for industrial development. So the charges that you see here aren't necessarily what they could have imposed. It is what they have chosen to impose. And for the non-residential side, that's occasionally lower.
Further questions? Councillor Bunker?
Thank you, Your Worship. My question has to do with service levels and establishing the existing service levels. So when you look at roads, when you look at a service level provided by a road, do you make a distinction between an asphalt road and a gravel road? Or do you just look at the lane kilometers of road?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. When we've done, when we look at the service level for roads, we try and distinguish between the arterials, the collectors, and the different surfaces that we're using as well. Although, I should say, it's not as rigorous a process as you would do, for example, under a roads need study. And the simple reason is that certainly in the town and almost every municipality I know of in Ontario, the road service level far exceeds anything that you would consider funding. It creates a funding envelope that far exceeds any capital program. Municipals and... Municipalities in Ontario just do not keep pace with their service levels when it comes to roads. So we do look at it, but we don't spend hours and hours and hours trying to get a level of precision that you might need for a proper asset management plan or something, something like that.
If I may, Your Worship, supplemental. So from, for example, say if you have a rural road, which is a gravel road, and there's development that occurs and the volume of traffic increases where it may be necessary to asphalt that road instead of having a gravel road. So you're increasing the service level due to growth that's happening in the area. Is that something that can be recovered through development charges? Or is that you're looking at existing service? You've got X kilometers of road, it's a road, that's not an increased service level going from gravel to asphalt?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize, councillor, I may have misunderstood your first question. So yes, to the extent that there are certain projects in the capital program that are the, that involve the reconstruction of existing roads, by bringing them up to an urban standard, either by changing the surface, or by improving the storm drainage, or by introducing curbs and gutters and sidewalks, that in and of themselves, those improvements will improve, improve traffic flow. So we've included some of those costs, not very much, but to the extent that there's quite a lot of that reconstruction work being planned for over the next 10 years, we've included a, a portion of that, and we've assigned it as a benefit to development. Yes, we have.
Thank you. May I ask another question, Your Worship?
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Just with respect to development that takes place in, in the rural area that's not on water and sewer, the water and sewer component of the development charge would not be applicable to those new units?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I would say yes, but I, I would, I'd just have to go to the bylaw to make sure that that's the case. In, in my view, that should be the, that should not happen. I wonder how, and maybe Mr. Murray might be better, I wonder how much development there is in the town that's actually not on any of the municipal services. Is there a lot? Okay. So I, I'm almost certain that the bylaw has a provision to ensure that that development is not charged, the water and sewer charges. But I will have to go and check, and I can report back to you.
Thank you.
If it's not there, it should be.
Further questions? There being none, thank you, Stephane, for the presentation, and we look forward to seeing you very shortly.
Thank you very much.
So we move on to item five, council information package. That is recommended action that the council information package having been given due consideration be received for information. All in favor? Carried. Do I, do I need a mover and a seconder? Yeah? Yeah, okay, mover. Jill? Yes, okay. Yeah, we, get a mover and a seconder first. So you move, seconder, Deputy Mayor, all in favor. Anyone wish to have something pulled? Councillor Sanema?
Thank you. We'd like, I'd like to have it, the report regarding the, the bridge trail development, that, the letter, just to have it pulled so that it can be brought to everyone's attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, all in favor. Carried. Section six, section eight, transportation environmental services, I would turn it over to councillor...
Sorry, Your Worship, just sorry for the interruption, just for clarification, what councillor Sanama was looking for, to have it pulled, and what section it, she's requesting that it be added to? I just don't have the list in front of me.
Recreation, communication.
And it's the, a bridge development letter, you said?
The Trans Canada Trail Letter, the overhead bridge, trailhead development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along to councillor Mayat.
Thank you, Your Worship. Consent on agenda, recommended action that the following consent agenda item have been given consideration to be received for information. First one is the drinking water quality management system minutes, the Philip H. Jones Water Waste Treatment Plan Inspection Report, 2018, and the County Road 93 Trail preliminary design, design drawing. Does anybody want anything pulled out of here or to discuss? Can I have a mover? Councillor LaRose, seconded by councillor Levy, all in favor? Thank you. Matters of consideration, the C, the SCADA Instrumentation, Controlled Engineering Maintenance Agreement, the three-year water division, Water Waste Division, W 2018-03, recommended for action, council entered into a maintenance agreement with Eramosa Engineering, Inc., for the provision of the SCADA and Instrumentation of Controlled Engineering Service for the Water and Waste Division for the Public Works Department for a term of three years. And that the service rate outlined in their maintenance renewal letter dated March 18, uh, March 11, sorry, 2019, to be approved for 2019, 2020, and 21 calendar year, and that the following bylaw maintenance agreement brought forward by staff to be council approval. That's the, for the sewage treatment plant, I guess, yep. And it's, used to have a one-year contract, and staff put together, and we discussed it, and we're looking to put a three-year contract that we were just mentioning for 19, 20, 21. If anybody has any questions or information they'd like to know, we have our manager, TNE, Brian. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Brian. I have no problems with the three years. I think that's a good idea. I was just wondering, with our SCADA systems down at the sewage treatment plant, how does having Eramosa look after that do anything for warranties on any of the new equipment from the STP plant?
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, to councillor LaRose. It wouldn't impact any of our warranties. In fact, Eramosa was the SCADA consultant as part of the Philip H. Jones Upgrades Project.
Do we have any more questions for Brian? Can I have a mover? Councillor Levy, a seconder, councillor Jill Sanema, all in favor? Pass, thank you.
Item number two, the Harbor Point subdivision phase two, initial acceptance of the remaining store, storm sewage work, the additional and existing referral for the upcoming agenda. The only item we have is Thompson Road. Is there any, anybody want to add anything? Can I have a mover? Councillor Brian Conning is in, the seconder, councillor Sanema, all in favor? Thank you. Question from the media or the public? No, back to you, Your Worship.
Thank you. We move on to number seven, section B, recreation and community services, and I pass it on to councillor LaRose.
Thank you, Your Worship. We have a couple of things on our consent agenda, just being the Penetangwesheen Public Library Annual Report and the Public Library Board Minutes. If nobody has any problems with that, we'll look for a mover. Councillor Sanema, seconded by councillor Mayat, all in favor? And that's carried. We'll move down to matters for consideration. We have one from Culture North Simco, and the recommended action is that the town of Penetangwesheen participate in the joint cultural community as requested by Culture North Simco, and that $10,000 be allocated from the Community Development Fund Reserve to fund the 2019 contribution for participation in the joint cultural committee. And further, that $10,000 be added annually to the town's operating budget to fund the joint cultural committee for 2020 and beyond. And finally, that the town appoint one member of staff as selected by the CAO and from one council member from council. Do we have a mover? Councillor Sanama, seconded by councillor Clu, and that one's up for discussion. Mayor Dubel, or Deputy Mayor Dubel?
Thank you, councillor. As your representative on the culture committee for the last six months, I certainly would recommend that we move forward with this project. I do feel that with the regional government study that is underway, it is another, a joint approach by all the municipalities in North Simco. And I did find out today that Tay Township has agreed in principle, and Tiny has done as well, with the caveat that it be on a trial basis for one year, and it be analyzed at the end of this one year. And I would recommend that we change that within the scope of this recommendation, that we would, instead of, I think, further that it be accepted and put in our operating budget, that we hold off for the moment and just agree to it for a one-year period as a trial basis. I think it's a great opportunity. The town of Midland has been very gracious in supplying their staff person to be available, and will be available to our staff to help out with additional projects, if we have additional projects, or to enhance projects that are on the docket. So I would certainly recommend that we move forward with this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we deal with the option of it coming out in, in future, till we hear everybody else first? Would that be all right with you? Thanks.
Certainly.
Anybody else? Councillor Levy?
Thank you very much. I hear some positive reactions, then I would go along with it on a one-year basis. Yeah, that's all I'll say.
Well...
Thank you.
If I may, thank you for that, and that's why I suggested the one year. I do believe that that's what the other municipalities have done, so we're all wanting to analyze things at the end of this first year.
Do we have any other questions? Councillor Mayat?
Thank you, councillor LaRose. I've got a hard time with this one here, too. Like, I'm not fully support for it. But I'll walk in the footsteps of councillor Levy, that for a year, I'll try it, but just for a year, but I'm, I'm still not fully convinced on it, so...
Thank you. Anybody else? If nobody else has, I will have my turn. We, we dealt with this, where we talked about this at section earlier this week. I had indicated then I was not in favor of this. I thought we're creating another level of bureaucracy for no particular reason. I didn't mind us funding, I didn't mind us funding that amount, but I was a little more interested in the thought that maybe some of the partners that we already used might have been a better location, that being the Heart of Georgian Bay or EDCNS. They already have their contacts up, they already have their infrastructure built in, all of their people are kind of on board for that type of stuff. So I didn't, I didn't mind us spending the, the $10,000. But to me, if, if you look at four or five communities chipping in, you're chipping in $40,000 or $50,000, and they're going to be hiring a full-time person. Well, that's going to eat up all of the $40,000, $50,000 that they do, so as councillor Levy and councillor Mayat had said, what are the changeables? What are the results? Are we just going around the area advertising some of the stuff that all of our municipalities already do? So I, I was very lukewarm to it, you know, and, and I'm, I'm still having a hard time with it, but we'll see. Your Worship?
Thank you, councillor. I, I feel that we, we should proceed with this on a one-year trial basis. I feel that we are not going to know what benefits we could derive from it if we don't, and, and quite likely that we proceed for a one-year trial period, that we see what kind of benefits we would benefit, or that we would receive from it, if any. And at the end of the year, we can make a decision as to, yes, we want to continue, or no, we don't. So I, I would make a motion that we, that the town of Penetangwesheen participate in the joint cultural committee as requested by Culture North Simco, and that 10,000 be allocated from the Community Development Fund Reserve to fund a 2019 contribution for participation in the joint cultural committee on a one-year trial basis.
Do you have a, do you have a seconder for that? Seconded by deputy mayor. So whoop, we have one more crack.
I just, if I could, thank you. You mentioned this money is not for staff. The Midland has agreed to have their cultural person that is in place. They are paying her wages. These dollars are to help the municipalities either with advertising or other issues, but it's not for staff. I just wanted to make that clear, councillor LaRose. And I see our clerk has her hand up, so...
Sorry, I need a flag. Just a matter of procedure, with the, with the amendment that councillor LaRose, oh, sorry, Mayor LaRose is recommending, I would suggest that that second statement within the motion be removed, because they do sort of contradict one another. So just going forward, if, if committee can consider that, the second part is that the 10,000 be added annually to the town's operating budget to fund, to fund for 2020. So if we're going to do a one-year trial, we should probably remove that second part.
Madam Clerk, perhaps we can add to, to this motion that we, we forego that the 10,000 added annually be taken out, but that we also add to this motion, and finally, that the town appoint one member of staff as selected by the chief administrative officer and from the town of Penetangwesheen, council, town council to represent the municipality on ad hoc committee to develop the committee's terms of reference. And I would, it's, it's in there. And I think moving on to that, if I may, I know that staff will appoint who, the, the staff member that will, will go there. From council's end, councillor, the deputy mayor has been very involved with this committee for an ongoing time. I would recommend that she sit on this committee as the council rep. Would you be prepared?
Yes, I would.
Council in agreement?
Cool. So our new motion will read with deputy mayor's name on it, and that the, it would be a one-year trial only, and the other annual monies be eliminated from that?
If, if committees comfortable with making all those amendments in one, in one shot, I'm happy to do that.
Everybody on board for what that was? Okay, if everybody's on board for that. We already have a mover and a seconder, I believe. We're going to call for the vote. All is in favor? All those opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Our next item is the Ecology Garden. We have a recommendation that the Wrecking Community Services Department work with the Karma Project to transition the garden operations back into the municipality and identify potential new partnerships. And that a $25 seasonal plot rental fee for the Ecology Garden be added to the new, to the user fee bylaw. And finally, that the recommendations be sought from the Community Well-being Committee on the future of that garden. Do we have a mover for that? Moved by councillor Sanama, seconded by councillor Clu. All those in favor? And that is carried. Down to number three, and that is our Georgian Queen Agreement. The recommended action, that the draft agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Penetangwesheen. And Steve, how do we pronounce that? RG? Yeah, we thought so. Okay. RG Boat Cruises Limited be approved as outlined in Attachment 1, and that the CAO and the Director of Wrecking Community Services are hereby authorized to make minor alterations to the agreement that does not substantially change its content. And finally, that the clerk bring forward the forward necessary bylaw for council's improvement. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Can move by councillor Sanama, seconded by councillor Levy, from councillor Levy, I've got to get the R in there. Any discussion on that? I don't know if everybody has seen it, read it, looked at it. At section, we were very happy to see that this is a longer-term agreement. It's good to see the, the Georgian Queen back at our docks. If you'll realize, in the agreement, because of our construction, it's going to happen down there hopefully at some point during the year, but when it is, some good discussions have taken place between the owner and staff to how we can work around those to make it work for everybody. But other than that... work for everybody, but other than that, it's ready to rock. So we'll call for the vote on that. All in favor? And that is carried. Down to C, we have referrals to upcoming.
Sorry to interrupt. We did add that item from earlier, the Trail, Trans-Canada Trails, I just didn't have it added to the agenda. Councillor Sanama.
Doesn't show up online.
Yes, it doesn't show up, because Councillor Sanama pulled it from the councillor information package.
Sorry, then.
I know, we don't, we don't do it often, so it, but it is something that she wanted to bring light to, and I think this is the section, if we're going to, we're going to do it, this is the time.
We will deal with that as number four, then. Councillor Sanama.
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, if they'd had a chance to read it, the fact that we have been, we have been funded, we've been approved in principle for up to $25,000 for the overhead bridge, trail development, and drainage upgrades. I mean, there are some caveats that are with the, with the approval, but we did want to have it brought forward, and whether our, which chair's title? Thank you. Whether Director Dejardin would like to address any more points on that, would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you through Chair LaRose to Councillor Sanama. So we just wanted to bring to council's attention that we did receive the, the funding. I know it was a question brought up at the last or second last meeting, I believe, by Deputy Mayor Dubois about where we were at with that, so thought it was worth acknowledging that we did receive the funding.
Cool. That's, and that was our fault. We had discussed this earlier this week, and we just didn't remember, but that's a good thing, because as we all know, it creates a traffic problem down there, we have a drainage problem down there, so this money will help us to get through that study so that we can hopefully in the near future move along to that. So moving down to C, we have referrals, and does anybody have any they want to see off of there? I would suggest our third one. Can you leave now? Is everybody okay with that? Any other ones? Anybody need added? Do we need a mover and a seconder or something? Yeah, we need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Sanama and Councillor Mayette, all in favor? That's Carrie D., question period from the media and public. Does anybody have any questions? We have nothing, your worship. Back to you.
Thank you, and that would bring us to number eight, Section C, Planning and Community Development Services, and I turn it over to Deputy Mayor Dubois.
Thank you very much, your worship. Under Consent Agenda, we have two items, minutes from the Committee of Adjustment and Main Street Art Ad Hoc Committee Minutes. Would anyone like to pull either one of those items? Seeing none, I need a mover. Moved by Councillor Clu. I don't know why, Jess, I have trouble with that. I need a sign here.
[inaudible]
Yeah, I know. Sorry about that. My apologies. Wow. I need a seconder. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, Councillor Cummings. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Carrie. Jeez. Anyway, we'll move on to matters for consideration. Penetangwishing's Climate Change Action Plan, recommended action. The Town of Penetangwishing adopt the 2015 to 2028 community and corporate greenhouse gas emission targets of 6% and 25% respectively, and that the Town of Penetangwishing's Climate Change Action Plan be approved in principle, and finally, that the Town of Penetangwishing's Climate Change Action Plan be revised and updated regularly, and that the actions be implemented as resources and budget permits. Do I have a mover? Moved by Councillor LaRose, seconded by Councillor Sanama. And before I call for the vote, I would like to, the report was very well done, for the benefit of our audience on live streaming, this is a great news for our community, and highlights that were reported in this document, the Town of Penetangwishing became a member of Partners for Climate Change Protection Program in January of 2018, and the PCP program is a national network of over 350 municipal governments working to fight climate change through a five-milestone performance-based model for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. In September of 2018, the town achieved milestone one of the PCP program through the completion of a corporate and community-wide greenhouse gas baseline inventory for the year of 2015. Sustainable Severn Sound has prepared a municipal climate change action plan for the Town of Penetangwishing, representing milestone two and three of the PCP program. Penetangwishing's Climate Change Action Plan was presented to all managers of the town in February of 2019, who made comments and revisions to the proposed corporate and community greenhouse gas targets and the associated actions. The purpose of this report is to recommend approval of the 2015 to 2028 community and corporate reduction targets for greenhouse gas emissions of 6% and 25% respectively, and to approve the Town of Penetangwishing's Climate Change Action Plan. A real good news story for us, I think, to be one of 350 municipal governments across Canada, is a great start for us, so I sure hope that council agrees with the report and will support the recommendation. Thank you. Did I read the recommendation? Oh, sorry, Andrea.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Dubois. I just wanted to invite, we do have Victoria Irvik here from SSS. She does have a quick presentation for committee, just to help understand what the Climate Change Action Plan is, and how they've come up with some of these targets that are being recommended tonight.
Very good, thank you. Welcome, Victoria. I saw you here, but I didn't realize you were making a little presentation.
Perfect. Perfect. Good evening, Honorable Mayor LaRose, members of council and municipal staff. Thank you for the opportunity today to present on Penetangwishing's Climate Change Action Plan. For those of you who don't know, I'm Victoria Irvik, and I am the Sustainability and Climate Change Coordinator with Sustainable Severn Sound. We are a not-for-profit regional sustainability program, equally financed and supported by six municipalities in the area, being the towns of Midland and Penetangwishing, and the townships of Tynie, Tay, Severn, and Georgian Bay. We are mainly focused on mitigating climate change by integrating climate change considerations within municipal operations, policies, and procedures, and do so through the adoption of climate supportive policy, which lay the foundational pieces for long-term climate So just wanted to give you a brief overview of Staff Report PL 2019-18, specifically Penetangwishing's Climate Change Action Plan and the greenhouse gas reduction targets, both of which fulfill milestones two and three of the Partners for Climate Protection Program. So just wanted a brief information. Climate change is the single biggest challenge of our time, affecting every aspect of our daily lives, from the food we eat to the extracurricular activities we enjoy. What's scary is that the greenhouse gas-producing activities that we've enjoyed up until now will continue to impact us into the future, so the changes we make today will only serve to better the conditions for future generations, including our children and their grandchildren. Our municipalities are where the economic and human costs of climate change hit the hardest, but they're also where the greatest opportunities exist. So with municipalities influencing roughly half of Canada's greenhouse gas emissions, municipalities such as the Town of Penetangwishing and your community can benefit from actions that make the movement of people and goods more efficient, reduce energy use and emissions, reduce vulnerability to climate change impacts, advance economic local development, and actions that ultimately make communities more livable, competitive, and resilient. So a little bit of background. In January 2018, your municipality committed to joining the Partners for Climate Protection Program through a council resolution, joining over 350 other Canadian municipalities. At that same time, Sustainable Severn Sound was approved as the town's associate member to the program, responsible for completing milestone requirements. So in July 2018, the Town of Penetangwishing achieved milestone one, and the corporate and community inventory that was submitted for milestone recognition is the same inventory that's displayed in the Regional Local Climate Change Action Plan that was released in July 2018, as well as your municipal-level action plan that's before you tonight, and the, both of which are based on an international and standardized PCP protocol, and of course, the reduction targets presented tonight and the plan fulfill milestones two and three. Just a quick overview of why or how the Climate Change Action Plan aligns with some existing corporate documents, specifically the council's existing strategic goal of promoting environment, environmental integrity and protection, community well-being, and economic prosperity, the Penetangwishing's Climate Change Risk Assessment, which was completed in 2017, the town's Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan, the legislative requirement of developing a strategic asset management policy by July 2019, which is to include vulnerabilities that may be caused by climate change to the municipality's infrastructure assets. It also aligns with several official plan goals and objectives, including one to minimize the impacts from climate change through innovative techniques while promoting the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, and lastly, it fulfills your commitment to the PCP program. Brief overview, last year, in collaboration with seven municipalities, we developed the Regional LCAP. As you can see, Penetangwishing's total greenhouse gas emissions in our baseline year of 2015 accounted for 13% of the regional greenhouse gas emissions. Of that 13%, this breaks it down further, corporate emissions were generated from activities including fleet, building and facilities, water and wastewater, streetlights, and waste. On the community side of things, emissions were derived from the transportation sector, residential, commercial, industrial, and waste. But beyond achieving milestone one of the PCP program, the completion of this inventory had allowed, has allowed SSS to identify sectors, sources, and activities that are responsible for greenhouse gas emissions, which will allow us to better identify those opportunities to help deliver on your greenhouse gas reduction targets. So quick overview of the community side of things. In 2015, the community emitted approximately 68,031 tons of CO2 equivalent, with the top two emitters being transportation and residential. Residential was emissions generated from electricity consumption obtained from Hydro One, and the transportation emissions were derived from vehicles kilometers traveled from Stots, Canada. Corporate emissions for 2015, again, fleet was the largest emitter, which is, these emissions were derived from the leaders of gasoline and diesels consumed, diesel consumed, and energy consumption from the town's building and facilities. So milestone two of the PCP program requires municipalities to set emission reduction targets. Sustainable Severn Sound has met with town staff on two separate occasions to review these targets, and agree that a community target of 6% and a corporate target of 25% below 2015 levels by 2028 are both realistic and achievable. Due to the fact that a local government has limited direct control over community emissions, this 6% reduction will primarily come as a result of technological advances and changes in behavioral and societal norms, but with that being said, SSS will continue to educate our community and residents on ways that they can reduce their personal emissions, while at the same time, working with municipal staff to implement the actions listed on Table Six, or Page 14 and 15 of your plan, in order to achieve the corporate reduction of 25% less tons by 2028. This is just provided as a quick overview, to show you where the community emissions will be in 2028, if we do nothing or continue business as usual. As per the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Partners for Climate Protection Program, these forecasts were based on an annual population growth rate of approximately 1.14%, which was derived from Schedule Seven of the County of Simcoe's growth plan. Same thing for the corporate side of things, just to show you if we do nothing or continue business as usual, corporate emissions will increase by approximately 14% over 2015 levels by 2028. However, if the town, when the town achieves the 25% reduction target, Penetangwishing would strive to emit no more than 585 tons of CO2 equivalent in 2028, which is technically a 54 reduction below BAU in that same year. And of course, because greenhouse gas emissions are directly correlated to energy costs, the expectation is that municipal expenses will either increase or decrease relative to the level of emissions. In terms of updating the reduction targets, I did want to mention that this is a not, not a one-time event, and FCM does encourage municipalities to periodically reevaluate these targets. Some examples of when these targets, when this would happen, would be if we're, when we're approaching the target year, and we're finding that these targets are overachieving or underachieving. As the associate member to the PCP program, we, SSS, are required to submit both corporate and community inventories every two years to the PCP program, as well as an annual report to your council, so we'll be able to see whether or not we are under, are overachieving. We also might want to look at updating targets if there's a significant change to community or political change, and this could take the form of being too aggressive or not aggressive enough. So you may be wondering how, sorry, it's a little bit small, but hopefully you can read it in your package, but you may be wondering how we're going to achieve the corporate reduction target of 25%. So on Table 16, it lists 14 specific actions that will support this reduction, and was developed with significant input from municipal staff. The actions listed are prioritized by year of implementation, and identifies the appropriate department and/or staff responsible for implementation. Now I say responsible, but SSS will obviously support these identified champions with the respective data, information, language, policy, but we did need to identify those departments internally in order to enact change with boots on the ground. So with that, in terms of next steps, in order to achieve milestones two and three of the program, the targets presented today and the plan itself do require council approval, and once council approves the recommendations outlined in Staff Report PL 2019-18, SSS will begin to support municipal staff in implementing the actions that are specific to Q2 and Q3 for 2019, while continuing to meet the ongoing reporting requirements of the PCP program. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Victoria. Very well done. Are there questions for members of council? Seeing none. I do have a mover and a seconder for, do I have a mover and a seconder? Madam Clerk? Oh, we have a question. Councillor Vadavankur.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. It was actually going to be a motion to amend, I was going to put forward. I fully support the report. You may have noticed in your council information package, there was actually a letter from Victoria that made a recommendation with respect to the town's upcoming strategic plan, planning process. Councillor Cummings and I sit on the steering committee that's, that's working with staff with respect to the strategic plan, and we're in the process of evaluating the consultants and whatnot, but in her, in her letter, she makes a recommendation that the town consider the integration of climate change language and your commitment to the PCP program when updating the municipality's strategic plan for the 2019, 2022 term of council. So, Madam Deputy Mayor, if I can get a seconder, I'd like to amend, propose an amendment to the motion and add that paragraph to the, to the motion, so that when we go forward and update our strategic plan, that that, that is there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that, Councillor Vadavankur. Do you have a seconder? Councillor Cummings? Would you like to read the motion with, as amended, or ask the clerk?
Just working on the final amendment here. I'll just need a couple of seconds.
I saw you in the audience, Victoria, but I didn't realize you were going to make a presentation, so I'm sorry that I spoke first was not necessary.
Would you like me to read the motion from the top?
Yes, please.
Okay, that the Town of
Okay, that the Town of Penetang Machine adopt the 2015 and 2028 community and corporate greenhouse gas emission targets of 6% and 25%, respectively, and that the Town of Penetang Machine's Climate Change Action Plan be approved in principle, and that the town considers the integration of climate change language and our commitment to the PCP program when updating our strategic plan for the 2019 to 2022 term of council. And finally, that the Town of Penetang Machine's Climate Change Action Plan be revised and updated regularly, and that the actions be implemented as resources and budget permits.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I do have a mover and a seconder for that, is the changes are satisfactory?
I did capture the mover for the amendment of Counselor Vadavankur, but I didn't capture the seconder.
Counselor Cummings.
Thank you.
Very good, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you, council. Our next item is referrals to upcoming agendas. That the Planning and Community Development Services Section endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. We have the Local Smoking and Vaping Bylaw, vacant municipal property inventory update, and the facade improvement program. Was there anything to add to this list? I'm not seeing that anything. So I will call for the vote. I would need a mover. Moved by Counselor Cummings, seconded by Counselor LaRose, and seconded by Counselor Sanama. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Question period from the media. Seeing none. Thank you, council, I'll move it back to your worship.
Thank you, and we will move on to nine, Section D, Finance and Corporate Services, and I will pass it to Counselor Vadavankur.
Thank you, worship. Referring to your agenda, we have three items under the consent agenda of this evening. The recommended action is that the following consent agenda items have been given due consideration, be received for information. Letter from the Family Physician Recruitment Steering Committee, request for funding. Number two, the 2018 Draft Debt Continuity Schedule. And number three, Memorandum Re-Provincial Regional Government Review. Did any member of council want to pull any of those, any of those three items? Seeing none, may I have a mover? That these items be received for information. Counselor LaRose, a seconder. Counselor Cummings, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, matters under, for consideration. And the first item is the 2018 Draft Reserves and Reserve Funds Continuity Schedule. And the recommendation is that the 2018 Reserves and Reserve Fund Continuity Schedule be approved as presented, and that the Museum Discretionary Reserve Fund be closed and the account balance be transferred to the Museum Capital Reserve for future capital projects. Madam Treasurer, did you want to add anything to your report this evening?
No, Mr. Chair, unless anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or clarify anything.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any, any questions of the treasurer on this report? Seeing none, may I have a mover and a seconder for the recommendation? Moved by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Sanama. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motions carried. Thank you. Sorry, your worship?
Thank you, Counselor Vadavankur. I'm seeking permission to go back to Section A under the letters received from information. I think that I would like to probably bring forward the letter from Family Physician Recruitment Steering Committee to move that we have some discussion and decisions made on that.
Madam Clerk, can you provide advice on this, since we've dealt with that just a few minutes ago?
Certainly, that was received for information, but I'll leave it to the chair to determine whether or not you'll allow the mayor to go back and pull that item for discussion.
I'll let you speak three times.
Thank you, worship. Deme noted, but, yeah, that's right. I'll open it to my colleagues around the table here. Are we, are we willing to have this matter brought back and allow the mayor to, to address this particular, this particular matter? Counselor LaRose?
Are we, are we anticipating that there would be a staff report on this letter coming in the future?
I don't know yet, I'm not sure what his worship will speak to on this yet. I think he just wants to bring it back first, if we can get it-
Well, I'd just like to know that first, whether this- If we're going to be having a staff report, then we might as well wait for it, and if we're going to circumvent that-
If I can confirm that we're going to receive a staff report on it, then I would certainly just let it go and, and have the recommendation of staff come forward so that we can discuss it and that we can deal with it.
Thank you, Mr. CAO, if you could weigh in.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, my suggestion is if we're going to continue carrying on that perhaps at the referrals item, that there could be a request of a staff report. It was not our intention, unless council wished for one. So if, if it's the appetite of council at referrals, then perhaps that's where this item could be addressed, and a staff report could follow. That might make the most practical sense.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, or sorry, Mr., your worship will deal with that as under the referral section of the agenda. You're welcome. So moving to the referral section of the agenda. We have a- Exactly. That the, we have referrals, that the Finance and Corporate Services Section endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. The first item is the Huron Airport Commission. The next item is the Joint Insurance Renewal. And the item after that is Community Contribution Policy Review, Council Conference Policy and Council Room Narration Policy Update, and Corporate Contingency Report. Are there any items to add to the referral list?
Physician Recruitment Steering Committee.
Thank you, worship. So we have one item to be added to the agenda, may, to the referrals. May I have a motion to endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff? Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, a seconder. Thank you, Counselor Sanama. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Just for clarity, we do require, so it is the physician recruitment as a topic, and we do require the key objectives to be included in that report, just for some staff direction. If we're assuming it's options related to the funding and the ask?
Yes, I would just elaborate, just to say that staff be asked to bring forward a report to committee of the whole dealing with options with respect to the request. Is that satisfactory? Madam, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Yes. Ask that include the background, like the history and what we've done in the past.
Thank you. Your worship, did you have any further comments?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I was just going to confirm that that would be certainly something that we will absolutely include in our, in our report.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. So, Madam Clerk, do you have sufficient information on that?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think I do have a mover and a seconder, so any further comments on this? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Moving on to question period from the media and the public. No questions, your worship, I'm going to turn it back to you.
And I will declare the meeting adjourned.
Mover and a seconder, Counselor Sanama and Counselor Cummings.
So we are going to, we are going to meet with-
For a bit?